A little after six. We're all set?
Just one second, I just want to make sure Ryan's good. You're good? He's good.
Good. Okay, it is, sorry, it's a little after six. Meeting call adjourned. Stand for a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As customary, I'd like to have a moment of silence for all the people that are suffering today's issues across the countries. I need to announce that this meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA TV. I need a motion to approve the bill on payroll warrant.
So moved. Second.
Did you hear any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. Need a motion to accept correspondence in the read file?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Whichever.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Real quick, now it's 6:05, we just made it, yeah. 6:05, we have a public meeting and application for Marie Fries doing business as best choice livery for a livery license and a livery driver's certificate on a premise located at 56 Vincent Street, subject to receipt of proof that the vehicle has been registered with the mass RMV as one to be used as a livery service and the updated certificate of insurance. Do you hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Is she here? Would you like to up and speak and give a little push for yourself as far as, right there?
It's too official.
Model advertise.
Hi, my name's Marie Fries and I'm looking to start a business. I've been a chauffeur for various companies for many years. I've probably taken some of you or your family back and forth. And it's time for me to do it on my own. And I'd like to do it in my hometown and give people another alternative for transportation, whether it be to, you know, Logan Airport or they have to go to, you know, Dr. Spoin in Boston or something like that, you know. I'm pretty well experienced with that, as you know, between taking care of my mom and my aunt who are very active in the town. And also, I like what I do. I want to be, give people, there's all this Uber and stuff going on, but we don't know who's driving through our towns all the time. And this way, if I have this connection and I know a lot of people, I can provide added service.
Good, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, we have a motion. We got a motion in a second, didn't we? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Great, thank you.
Good luck, yeah. Now I can jump back to, is there anybody here who would still like to speak in public forum? I jumped over that because we had our scheduled hearing at 6:05, I want to make sure. Seeing none.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. You're all set?
Okay, thanks for coming.
Yep. It's a little early, but 6:10, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Department of Public Commissioners, Public Works Commissioners, for the purpose of reviewing and the following candidates for interim appointment in order to fill one vacancy. Kevin, what I'd like to do is go over a possible process and then turn the gavel over to you. Can you run it? It's your commission. What we've done in the past is that we've allowed, if the candidates are here, there's three of them, in the order that they appear on the agenda, if they would like to say a few words about themselves, a few words to keep things moving, that's fine. And then once all three have had that chance, then what I think is we should have a vote to put all three candidates in the movement. And then we go around the clock and we'll point out who we think should be the best person for the job. And the one that gets the most votes gets the position. Also, once they're done, both boards will have a chance to ask any questions if they have. And if there is a tie of any part, or, there's eight of us here, say it's 332, we'll say the two, we'll take those two ones as a tie and we'll go around the board again. So that being said, I'll turn the gavel. Would you like it?
I don't need it.
Over to you.
All right. Thank you. So first, we have Ronald Delmonico first. Come on up.
Come on up.
Yep. State your name, rank, serial number.
My name is Ronald J. Delmonico. I'd like to first and foremost thank the Selectment Board and the DPW Board for allowing me to have the time to speak to you. As most of you know, I was DPW Commissioner for close to 14 years. I had to resign due to some physical ailments that I had. And I'm back now. Let's see. To be a DPW Commissioner, you really have to know what you're doing. There's no question about it. I'll give you an example. If there's a snowstorm on Christmas Day, and it's five degrees with a 15-degree below zero wind chill factor, and it's a water main break, these guys have to go out there and fix it. You've got to know what you're doing. It's very important. With OSHA rules and regulations, it's extremely important, but they go out there and they do what they have to do. And that's much appreciated. They come back to the board and they report everything that they do. And we don't receive any of this, none of this. They do it all on their own time. And it's probably one of the most least appreciated positions in the town. You all know that I have a lot and a lot of experience. I was born into this business. My father, God rest his soul, was R.J. Delmonico Construction. I always wanted to be an attorney, to be honest with you, but I didn't have a choice. And my cousins Johnny Delisandro from Delisandro Corporation, my godfather is R.A.D. Sportsfield and Sosho Lumen Malts, I believe that's VFW Parkway Drive. And no longer business was my uncle Donald Coliaco from P. Coliaco Corporation. So I didn't have a choice to do what I wanted to do, I had to do construction. But the amount of experience I have, it's like all you guys. I mean, I wouldn't know how to be an electrician, I wouldn't know how to do the numbers like you guys do, but as far as construction is concerned, I, without a question, not being sarcastic, I have the most experience in this room right now. This isn't a popularity vote. I've got to reiterate that as strong as I possibly can. This is not a popularity vote. This is a vote for the person who has the most experience. Okay? And I have to make that very important. All right? And by the time this vote is ended, I'll know right away if it's a popularity vote or not. I appreciate everything that the DPW has done for me while I've been sick. Quite a few years back, my wife and I, this is the first time I've actually brought it up in public because I don't like to talk about it. We adopted the island at the end of Commercial Street and Washington Street. We were younger then. We tore the island apart and we donated all the shrubs and trees there. And the DPW with Bruce, very, I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you did, Bruce, honest to God. They took, they maintained it for me and my wife and we're going to get back there pretty soon and do what we have to do. I'm not from Whitman, I'm from Nantasket Beach, but I really like this town, I like it a lot. And the people are very kind, have been very kind to me, very understanding, very forgiving. As you know, that I can get a little bit overboard sometimes. But I'll cut it short, I've got all kinds of notes and papers here, but I appreciate having the time to speak to everyone here. And one more time, this is not a popularity vote. I think we all know what I'm talking about. All right? Thank you very much for the time. How are you, David?
Good to see you. Go on, there might be questions.
Thank you very much.
Hold on. No, there may be questions. Yeah, no, there may be questions, we'll.
Okay, go ahead. Sure.
Thank you for your years on the board, I did serve on the board when you were on it.
You're welcome.
Did it be no issues with attending meetings once a month or as needed?
No, no.
And then I'll ask this of everyone, what do you think the biggest issue with the DPW is right now? Short and sweet.
Well, with all the new construction that's coming up with the Forest Main and all the stuff that's going on, OSHA safety rules and regulations, I just can't overemphasize the importance of that. And knowing what you're doing. I mean, if you don't know what you're doing, you shouldn't be on the board. It's that simple. Like I said, I'm not an electrician, I don't, I'm not going to call a plumber to do electrician work at my house. All right?
Just go. Could you say your name, Ron?
Thank you.
And put your name forward. I think this seat was up in the last election and nobody pulled papers. Is there any reason you didn't run for it when it was an election in the town?
I may have cancer. I'm not here to talk about my physical illness. I couldn't do it.
Can I step in just a minute and ask, you said you couldn't do it last year, what makes you think you can do it this year, then?
Things are improving with my health.
Okay, that's good to know. And here?
Thank you.
Can I ask another question if you're wrong? You stated something that you, you're from Nantasket, and I think you meant to say that you were born and brought up in Nantasket, you still live in Whitman, correct?
That's right.
Oh, okay. I just want to clarify that, because if you were living in Nantasket, you would be off the list immediately.
No.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, I just wanted to let you know that basically I'm not a townie.
Don't feel bad, I'm not either.
Okay. You asked me the question, I'm giving you the answer.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you plan on running for reelection when your term is up?
Absolutely.
Want to attempt to tie it on?
As long as my health is okay.
Basically what I have.
I just have a quick question. Obviously, some of the things you cited, you know, Forest Main, possible DPW building project, I know, I've always said this, that the crew we have down at Public Works is unbelievable and they know what they're doing. Would you be bringing any, like, budgetary knowledge as far as the DPW or any knowledge as far as?
As far as numbers are concerned and things like that.
Building, construction, things like that. Do you have any experience in any of that kind of stuff?
Yes. As far as numbers go, no, I don't. I was in the hole doing the work myself. On the job training. I took a bunch of courses at Northeastern University also, but you can't beat all the job training. You just can't beat it. And I've been in the hole on Christmas Day.
Can I just clarify something? That as a DPW Commissioner, I mean, you keep going as if you're in the hole with the workers. As a DPW Commissioner, you oversee everything, you're not in the hole with people.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, but no, the way you were phrasing things, that's the way you were going. So I just want to clarify that, that as a DPW Commissioner, I realize you know that because you've been on the board before.
Right.
But I just want to clarify that for those that do not know.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
No problem at all.
All set?
Okay.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you very much, Ron.
I really appreciate the time. And thank you to you guys, I really appreciate it.
All right. Good next. So we got Joe Iainon is next.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Ron.
Joe, well, thank you for putting up your name for a possible position and volunteering.
Yeah, no, it's my pleasure. And so I was, I've been here since 74, just to recap my situation. And I moved, my parents actually moved me from East Boston, so I'm an East Boston guy, I'm proud of that. And, but, you know, since I was 14, I've been here. So Whitman is my home. I have been married 37 years, I have five children, they went through the system. I belong to CERT, you know, we have some members here, and I certainly belong to the Holy Ghost Parish, we're collaborative now, very proud of that. And I tend not to belong to things, I get involved with things as much as I could. So for most of my life, I've been in business. I own my own business, I've been in business, I'm currently a product development manager for a medical device manufacturer in Hanover. And I don't travel quite as much, I don't know if it's because of the COVID, which is a great thing, actually. You know, when you travel most of your life, 20-plus years, you know, it's nice to be close to home. So I work from eight to four, you know, I can easily come to these meetings, but more importantly, I think it's about purpose and passion. I mean, if you're going to look at the books, you know, I know it's us three guys here running, as far as experience with the DPW, I don't have any. And as far as, you know, being available to fix a broken pipe on Christmas Eve, not going to do it. I mean, Bruce, Bruce I've known for many years, he's more than capable with his team to be able to do that. I think what I bring to the table here is some purpose and passion that probably hasn't been here for a long time. I mean, you tend to see the same names and people run, you know, for these offices and for other, for committees, and, you know, it's probably a time that you may want to consider getting some average Joes, not to be a pun on that, but, you know, get some, get some people that are from the people, you know, with parents, we belong to the community, we want to get involved. And, you know, I know there was a challenge right now getting the corner for the last meeting, you know, what are you going to do to inspire more residents to come to these things? Well, I mean, my, my take would be that, you know, we have a gentleman that's been a town administrator, we have a fellow that's already been on the board, you know, I get it. So, you know, if you're thinking about the least candidate, I'm probably it. But at the same time, you know, when you think of somebody that would like to come in here and contribute, like I said, I traveled most of my life, I wasn't able to come to a lot of these things. I'm able to come to these things now, I want to give more, you know, I've been a member of the Knights of Columbus, too, and even with that, I felt bad, I was traveling, so now I'm an officer over there. I'm on three different boards in business, you know, so I know what it is to be a president, I was a president three terms in our trade association. On a daily basis, I could, I talked to presidents and vice presidents of major corporations. I know how to conduct myself, I know how to deal with a relationship. I think coming into the DPW with a fresh set of eyes might be a good thing, because I, you know what, I don't have all the answers. You know, I'm going to, if I, if I'm fortunate to be able to be considered and I come in, you know, I'd be coming in with a helpful attitude. You know, I don't know everything, but I'd love to learn, you know. And I think, too, if, perhaps if you get somebody like me, this might be inspiring for others seeing my name on a board like this, that maybe haven't done anything for a time, you know, like, hey, if Joe can do it, you know, he's a good guy, he's, I got to, I think I have a great reputation in the town, I haven't done anything wrong, I pretty much do what I, you know, I need to do. I help out as much as I can, but I think if you're looking for that fresh blood and a new set of eyes and somebody that has zero agenda, I don't owe anybody anything, you know, I don't come in with any prior relationships, per se, I'm not currently on another board, and, you know, I would, this would be my sole activity as far as coming in and being on the DPW. So, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it. Pretty simple.
Good. Same question that I had, the biggest issue, challenge that you know of or hear of for the DPW?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't really have a challenge available, so it's not a challenge from my side as far as a challenge from DPW.
For the department, you know, like, you know, what do you see or know or hear?
Well, I mean, look, owning a business, I think there've been challenges with budget, there's always a challenge with budget, right? I mean, we're a small town, very proud of the fact that we are, but, you know, what do you do with less? And how, and how do you treat people? That's the other thing, I mean, it was brought to my attention recently that, you know, when an individual comes forth and said there's some issues on a, maybe they fell on a walk or they, you know, there's, there's something going on in town, you know, instead of just saying, maybe that's coming, or, you know, we're trying to do the best we can, you know, maybe, maybe treat the person with a little dignity and see what possibly can be done and give them some indication that the DPW is trying at. I would also concur with the last fellow that was here, that I've known Bruce for a long time now and I, I miss him, I miss him on my street in the winter, I tell you that. Nobody snores. He was the best. But he's been very responsive, I mean, we've had, we've had potholes and, like everybody in town, you know. But the point is that, you know, if you're, if you're good about it and I, and, you know, he's, him and his crew has done the patch and we know you can't repair certain street, we can't do it all, but what can you do? And I think, I think possibly if you got somebody that maybe hasn't been on a lot of these boards or had, had served the town in some capacity, that they might be able to provide that relationship builder. Okay, because that's what I, that's what I really do, and I do it pretty well, because I'm pretty authentic, honest, I mean, these are traits that people say, you know, I got a lot of bad ones, you probably just have to ask my wife, as most people, you know, my best pie is humble pie, I always say that, you know. But I think that's another thing, too, is I bring a little humility to this, you know, in that type of perspective. So if you, if you're looking for somebody that wants to work with the board, you know, and learn more about the town and probably spread the good news that, you know, hey, guys, you might want to sign up for some of these boards and help out the town, I think I might be able to bring that, too. But, you know, my father was in construction, I, you know, I know the basics, you know, I, I would like to learn more, you know, so that's the, that's the point, I think. You know, you got somebody at least that's going to come forward and help out and learn the system a little bit better, you know.
Same question that I had in the previous. If you are selected tonight at the end of the term, are you planning on re-upping?
I'd love to. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I know there's openings on other boards and that sort of thing, but I mean, the DPW holds a certain, you know, ability to get more involved with projects right in town, and that's, that's why there's an attraction, when David had suggested that I think about coming on, on board here, that was the attraction for me, that I think this, this could really help out, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
That's the same question I asked before. Nobody ran for the seat a year ago, is there any reason why you weren't interested then and you might be now?
I just didn't know about it. Yeah, I really didn't. I mean, I'll be hon, I mentioned to you that I was, I was busy, right? And because of COVID, it, it just kept, it just kept me, it kept me home, and now people know they can do things virtually. I mean, there's a point that I might have to travel, I go to shows, I do that sort of thing. But, yeah.
And then I guess a follow-up question just for you, your five kids, Jackie and Casey among them?
Yes.
And what school are they?
Yeah, I can't believe that, man. I'm glad I went to the local community.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
Small world.
I'll mention, I'll mention Justin, yeah. Yeah, Jack is doing very well, she's at Babson, and Casey's a nurse and she's a, I'm a grandfather. Yeah, thank you.
Now you've made me feel old because one of his youngest went to school with my daughter.
By the time you realize that, Randy.
My question is, any experience with municipal budgeting, financing or?
Not municipal, no, no. Business and that sort of thing, but not municipal, yeah.
Correct.
I have a, not so much a question, but statement where Joe stated I did present this option to him.
Sure.
And please understand to the other two candidates, tremendous amount of respect, appreciate what you've been doing and done for the town. You know, again, hands down, as Joe said, there's almost no competition for the experience
Oh, yeah.
of construction, town administration. So due to some miscommunication in my email flaws, I didn't understand what was going on and who was really still interested. I invited Joe. Still think that the fresh perspective, I think the board would benefit from somebody that's a sustainable candidate, that's interested and wants to stay on board and has experience with other boards and committees. It's kind of how the board operates. As you said, we don't get in the trench. We're trying to supervise that, we're volunteer board. You know, we vote once a month on things and try and to carry the most important things forward with the money we have, that kind of thing, so I think Joe would understand that.
Oh, yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Hmm?
Nope. Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Last candidate, Frank Lynam.
Good evening, thank you for inviting me to this venue. Brief background, I've been involved in the town in various boards or committees since 1993. I recently, not so recently, retired as a town administrator in October of 2020. Spent a year unwinding, which only someone involved in that could appreciate what that means, but I needed a break and I got it.
Thank you.
When this opening was announced, I felt that I had a lot I could contribute to it. My years of experience in management, both within the town and outside the town, and really need to recognize that the Board of Public Works Commissioners are managers. They're the executive board for that department. Their primary role is to set policy, hire people, and make sure that what needs to be done based on their statutes and their guidelines is done. And that's what I would look at as my role as a team member with the Board of Public There are a lot of things going on in town right now, and I know, I guess I'll wait for the questions to respond to them, but I feel I have a good deal to contribute. I have personal knowledge of most of the people involved, I have a good working relationship, or had a good working relationship with the folks on the board as well as the superintendents and the staff. And I think I have a lot to contribute, but that, of course, will be up to you.
Same question. Challenge, issue?
Answer.
May I have a list?
I don't, I don't think there's any one overriding priority, but certainly, one thing that's been looming since 2007, when we did our first study, was the facility that the DPW operates in. It's a board, and work has to be done to make sure the people of Whitman are aware of what the needs are. It's been my experience in this town that we don't like debt, we don't like to approve exclusions or overrides, but when they're presented and they're presented properly and they're justified, people of Whitman have been very supportive in stepping up to do those things. A close additional issue, and then, you know, I don't know a better way to say this, is staffing. We have a real issue attracting and retaining people, and there's a lot involved in that. I have a lot of experience in personnel development and I could provide some guidance and assistance in that area as well, and... And make it the best we can do. As far as budgeting goes, you have two superintendents who know their job. They're pretty good at putting information together. And I wouldn't presume to jump in the trenches with them. That's not where we belong. That doesn't mean I won't go out and look at it if there's an issue. So I'll be aware and able to discuss it. But I think it's important to keep perspective on what we are and what we need to do.
Okay, just a follow-up. So right now you're, you're on the DPW Building Committee as an at-large. Obviously, myself and Ken are the appointed as part of the commissioners, the two commissioners. If you were chosen, obviously, then the board would meet and appoint two. If you were not one of those two, would that be an issue?
No, because I'd still have an opportunity to contribute. You work collectively as a board. The representatives who sit on any particular committee or board are there for the benefit of the group as a whole. And we certainly still have the opportunity to look at things and discuss them.
Okay, Frank, same question. If in fact we choose you tonight, would you consider re-upping when the time comes?
Well, it's two years away, but certainly if I'm effective and feel I'm accomplishing things, yes, I would consider re-running.
I wanted to hear.
And then, yeah, the same question. The last person, the person who resigned the seat was last re-elected as a write-in because nobody pulled papers. So is there any reason why you did not run for this?
I had another job then.
Good answer.
I already know the answer to my question, but I will, I'll preface why I ask that when we go around to vote. But I, I know my answer from Frank about budgetary experience.
Okay. Uh, is there any other questions? Any other board members?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, well, I do have a question that I'd like to bring up with our town administrator. Reason why I didn't ask any questions and I would need some clarification is because my wife works for the DPW. And I don't want to get hurt or myself in, in any hot water. So I'm wondering if I should abstain from voting in this procedure or not? And I didn't know if you had any advice.
I don't have any legal advice. You know, the state ethics law indicates that if there is a perception of a conflict of interest, then the, the employee in question, or in this case, the elected person in question, makes, is, is required, urged to make an official filing, in the case of an elected official, with the town clerk and determine, you know, what the outcome is. So I don't really have any legal advice. It's a question at the end of the day, really for the state ethics commission, I think.
Thank you. All right, so next we entertain a motion to put Ron Delmonico, Joe Ainenon and Frank Linum.
Consideration. I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. Can you further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we just want to go around the boards.
I'll start it. So previously, my position has always been, when we've had to fill seats, that we are not substituting a, a vote or, you know, what may happen if candidates run. My position has always been to try and fill it with the person I feel is the most qualified for the position. For that reason, I, I would vote for Frank Linum based off structure of the organization, financial knowledge, and, and basically since like we have agreed, you're not working in the hall. It's more of a management position. I feel Frank brings the most qualifications to it.
Couldn't have said it better myself for the same reason, Frank Linum.
Okay, and I echo, I've known Frank a while. I know he, he knows all about budgets. I've known that he has gone to many, many of your meetings when necessary as far as dealing with something. He knows the ins and outs. And again, it's a management position. Like he said, he doesn't have to be an engineer or anything like that. I mean, it helps, but he doesn't have to be. That's not the decisions he's making. We have qualified superintendents and assistant superintendents, foremen's in each of our departments that make those decisions. This is a policymaking position. And I agree that Frank Linum is probably the best of the three candidates.
I have a lot of abundance of caution and not knowing the answer directly. I probably, I would dearly love to vote in this, but I will abstain.
Vote for Joe, I know.
After hearing all the various people in their interviews, questions and answers, I, I guess I'd be looking at some fresh blood myself. I'm going to vote for Joe.
I think both candidates, all candidates are, are, would make a good commissioner. I have worked with Frank for many years and I know both Joe and Ron. I vote for Joe. I think some, you know, every, we've been very lucky as a board that we haven't had this issue, that we've maintained a, a good board. But I know there's a lot of boards that barely have enough to even have a meeting. So I think, you know, my vote for Joe is to, to try to entice some, you know, ourself, our board and others to have some new perspective, you know?
I have a question. We, we know why we only have four out of our five members because Kyle is L. You have five members, but four members and.
Mark got called in for a second shift.
And he's not available.
He texted me at about two o'clock this afternoon and said he had, he couldn't not work a second shift. So he was planning.
He's in town?
Assuming.
911 call?
Yeah, it, it was this afternoon, so.
Yeah, well, I guess the policy now is that two names are put in. How do we break the tie?
Do we?
Lincoln isn't the tie, isn't the tiebreaker? Lincoln isn't the tiebreaker, no, not in this case, huh?
Not a county.
Seven of us are the tiebreaker.
Paper, rock, scissors?
We could ask if anyone wants to change the vote. And if not, we can revisit when all members are available in the future. Not sure if adding two more people breaks the tie, but.
Yeah, no, because you'd have Kyle, we'd have Mark.
Well, yeah, I don't know. I, I, I mean, I don't want to push it down the road because we're, you know, as you can see, things come up that we, you know, we barely have our, we have our meetings just like everyone else, you know? We're scheduled to meet again just before town meeting.
I'm certainly sure, now Kyle is watching this on cable.
He has to be here.
Huh? You have to be here?
All right, we'll go around again then with the two names?
Yeah, I guess. Voting for two.
Frank Linum.
Frank Linum.
I'm going to stay with Frank.
Let's stay.
Joe. I'm going to stay with Joe too.
Just to ease your mind, I mean, you know, we're looking for someone that has some experience and knowledge in town, you know, what, you know, laws and, and things like that. I mean, and not somebody new to, I mean, new blood is nice, but nice is not what we're looking for.
No.
I'm looking for, well, yeah, but I'm looking.
I was in the same, I mean, I came on the board the same way back in 2008. I was appointed and I knew nothing. You know what I mean? And, and I've learned a lot and, and, you know, with, you know, people like Frank and, you know, the selectmen, you know, you know, yes, we're the governing body and.
And Joe's not going to yell at me Sunday in church, are you? I'm, I'm four, I'm four seats behind you, so.
Dan, I'm going to just make a, I guess, just a statement, if you want to call it that. If you think about anything, any job that you go into, whether you bring experience in or not, there is a learning curve either way you look at it. I mean, it's not something you can walk in. I don't know, I, I'll use you as an example. When you stepped in the selectman's seat for the first time, did you know everything off the top of your head? So you, boom, here it is.
Well, he told you he knew everything.
Yes.
Come on.
Ask Frank. Yeah, I was chairman of the finance committee for five years and the reason I ran is because I didn't like what the selectmen were doing. So I ran and here I am 20 years later.
All right, we'll back it up then, when you first stepped on the finance committee.
I was elected, I was put on the finance committee because I did budget for my company.
Oh, I can't win. You get the gist of what I'm talking about.
Now, when I first started with Style Market at 16, did I know everything? No.
No, okay, thank you.
But they sent me to college, Bentley.
That's what I mean. So there's a learning curve on anything, is all I'm saying.
All right, do we have a 16-year-old here that wants to start to learn?
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could, the, you could continue this discussion, have a further joint meeting with the benefit hopefully of two more members. You know, we could seek an opinion from the Ethics Commission in the interim and, and determine, you know, what they, what the attorneys there think regarding selectmen Byzanson's participation. And the, you could jointly meet again, perhaps night of town meeting. I think, you know, both boards are going to, planning on, or say perhaps May 10th.
Yeah, Kyle will not be here for town meeting either, I don't think.
Right. But May 10th is likely, is likely the board selectmen's next meeting. And you could have a continuation of a joint meeting.
I would second that.
Unfortunately, I will not be available. That's, I think, our DPW meeting was scheduled originally for the 10th, but I wasn't going to be available. I'd be out of state at that point in time. So that's why we moved it to the 17th.
Is it a Zoom meeting?
As far as the 10th, I wouldn't be able to even do a Zoom.
You could do, you could do a Zoom meeting.
You can do a Zoom meeting, state allows it, still.
Oh, no, 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 I realize that. But what I'm saying is I wouldn't even be available for that in the evening or in the daytime.
I was just going to say, I, Chairman, I don't think this is two more years that we really want to go into something hasty, that it probably is worth getting the input from other members. Even just Brian's, if we don't get all three, at least one or two more.
And maybe we can call the State Ethics Committee and see if Brian can vote or his wife.
That's what I'm suggesting, yeah, that, you know, I wouldn't want somebody to question something three weeks from now or, you know, I think if continuing it is allowable. I too wanted to reach a decision tonight, but, you know, I'd be more comfortable with something that everybody on both sides.
So then, it sounds like we put this off until we get an answer on Brian's question plus Kyle can attend a meeting and, and your other member can attend it. And, yes, Frank?
If I may address the board?
Sure.
In the interest of moving things forward, since we have a tie group, I will withdraw my name from nomination.
Do we motion for recess?
So, that being said, if he withdraws his name, it would be Joe, right, John?
I suggest you vote again.
We'd have to vote again.
Okay, go around the board. So we're going to have, what, one name in, or two names in?
True. Well, there's two, there's still two other names.
Okay.
You already eliminated a name.
Yeah, with the second vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll start, I'm staying.
Uh, Joe Ainenon.
I guess Joe?
I'm staying.
Joe.
Joe. I'll vote for Joe.
I go two.
Sign it. We just got to put a name on it. Okay, that's it, right? Joint meeting?
Yeah, that's it for a joint meeting.
Okay. Time is it now? 10 minutes to 7?
Yes.
Right. A motion to adjourn the joint meeting.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Any discussion? On paper? Okay, now I need to say that I need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law 30A 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions, our contract negotiations with non-union personnel being the deputy chief of the police. And 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the DPW, Local 1769, the IAFF, Whitman Public Library Employees Union, SEIU, Local 888, the Union OPEIU, Local 6. If an open meeting has a detrimental effect with the bargaining position in the public body, the chair so declares. And just to let you know, once we're done with executive session, we will reconvene into open session. So do I or motion?
So move. Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
We're going to go into executive session and when we're done, we will go back into open session. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
We all set? Okay, thank you very much. We're now back into open session. Now we're reconvened and we're going to go to the town administrators' report. Lincoln, you're up.
So briefly on COVID, having given one of those, one of these COVID-19 updates in a little bit, our positivity has been climbing the last few weeks, 4.08% through this past Thursday. That's the highest level since February 24th, but certainly nowhere near where we were at in mid-January, mid to later January. In speaking with Chief Clancy and Danielle Clancy, our clinician, you know, working on COVID-19 matters, I think they both pointed out that a lot of folks are going out and not having masks and going out and participating in a lot more activities than certainly they were in January. So that's certainly a factor in the case numbers going up. The vaccination rate, the fully, fully vaccinated, vaccinated rate for those eligible, vaccinated, has climbed actually quite a bit. It's a 68%. We were kind of hovering around 60% and going up percent, percent each week, but it's now at 68% in the town. The, yesterday, there was a COVID-19 vaccination clinic for everyone eligible. And I know I was certainly confused about this, but briefly, everyone who is eligible for a fourth or more booster shot, so, so everyone's eligible for a Moderna booster shot, a, a third shot, a first booster shot from 18 and over. But for those who are eligible for a fourth and further booster shot, it's those over 50 or immunocompromised at any age. And the guidance from the federal health authority is, is not should, but can. Can receive that further fourth shot, further second booster shot. Can receive that further fourth shot, further second booster shot. So in vaccinating those folks and also vaccinating, and also having a vaccination clinic for people for a first booster shot who haven't received one, 85 people, uh, signed up and received that at the Housing Authority. Yesterday, it wasn't just Housing Authority folks, but certainly it was at the Housing Authority and there was a focus on that, but everyone in those categories was, was eligible for that. There's, there, there's also going to be 15 home visits tomorrow for reaching those who are homebound, to get further booster shots for those people who are eligible. We continue to hand out, um, COVID-19 test kits at, um, the sites here at Town Hall, at the library, in the senior center. We'll certainly have plenty of masks and COVID-19 test kits at town meeting. And, um, I'm seeking some, some more, um, we're seeking some more COVID-19 test kits from the county. We'll find out if they're available, but we do know that the county's COVID-19 test kits expire today, as of today, on July 10th, so there's some limited utility for those. So, um, that's my COVID-19 update.
Next is on your list is the library?
Yes, so, we talked about this a little bit before, but I participated with, um, the, with Sudarant, the Chair of the Board of Library Trustees in interviewing finalists, candidates for the library directorship, including, who had been our interim director and previously to that, our Assistant Library Director, David Aronson. That interview group recommended to the Board of Library Trustees David's appointment as the, um, permanent library director. The board trustees appointed him as such, and so we welcome David to that role. He's already made some great changes over there. I'm sure, um, some, some excellent things to come. And we'll be in, um, with, again, together with Sudarant and the trustees, having, uh, some contract negotiations with him to determine what his contract might look like, which would be approved eventually, if it was to be approved by the Board of Library Trustees per the state law.
And next, uh, on the, uh, list of, uh, your reports, the Park Ave School.
Yes, so I wanted to give an update to the board on the status. Obviously, it's a long-running issue. Something, uh, I've been working on behind the scenes with Town Council for the last, uh, few months. And in addition, at the request of folks who are actually in this room, the Evanses, Keith and Tom and Nicole Vormit, I met with them, uh, and some ideas that they have for that site. They have, uh, become an organization they call the Artisan House Incorporated, and they have some ideas about what, um, they would like to do with the Park Avenue School. In hearing, and, you know, obviously the board can hear more from them if they so choose, but in hearing from them and speaking with them, they are seeking to do work more quickly than how quickly the Park Avenue School could possibly be available, I think, for any use. One of the things that they had identified was that they, uh, wanted a space that was ready quickly and near the train station. We talked a little bit about the, um, possibility of them reaching out to some of the large building owners that are nearer the train station, um, certainly than the Park Avenue School, and they may have space more that is, that is more ready now than the Park Avenue School building for what they're seeking to do. So that's one piece of that. Regarding the disposition and the longer-term options for the building, so I've been working with Town Council over the last few months on, uh, preparing, and, um, he should be, um, filing very shortly, um, what's called a CIPRA, um, application with the Attorney General's Office. Basically, what, the, the long and the short of it is that, um, if the board may recall, and I think you've heard this before, the Park Avenue School and that site was not donated to the town, but was sold to the town at lower than what appears to be market, market rate at the time. And what, how, what the Attorney General's Office, in their role as general oversight over trusts, even though this isn't a trust per se, it's sort of considered to be a trust legally, um, that in their general oversight, they consider that to be something of a trust. And what the CIPRA process is, is, um, basically saying, according to the Attorney General's Office, that the conditions that were put in place for this trust, again, this is not a trust per se, but equivalent to a trust, and when the conditions can't be met anymore because of the, you know, the beginning of the trust intent, then that trust can be dissolved. And so, um, so, you know, certainly if there's any further input from the board, that's welcome, but I would suggest that the, um, that the town, that Town Council should file that. I have some folks who I've worked with previously at the Attorney General's Office where I can try and make that process as quick as possible. And so then that will, if it's, if approved by the Attorney General's Office, would allow the town to have more options with the eventual disposition of that property.
Okay. Um, would you like to speak on that, of any? I know, I know that the, the Park Ave School, I mean, it's in pretty bad shape, and I know if it's something that you want to get accomplished ASAP, as soon as you can, are there other areas in town that may be available to what you're looking for? And I'm thinking, the old Sophie's Restaurant, is that big enough?
Well, we, after we met with Lincoln, we actually met with a lot of, of the building owners and people around town that may have space available, like a Pond Street and Greve Development thing.
Yeah.
And it just, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it's, like the Pond Street one, I don't know if you've been down there, but it, like, we're trying to be like a, a center for learning and for art and for the community, and like just walking down that area, it just doesn't feel safe to me, and I don't think.
Okay.
I let my 12-year-old or 10-year-old kid, like at 6, 7 o'clock at night, walk through there, you know what I'm saying? So we, we really, we understand that the school is not in any condition.
Oh, very bad.
We don't want it to be. We want it demolished. We want it razqued, to make it an absolute green, uh, building, to make everything that you do and more high-tech, so it brings attention also to our town, and it allows us to take advantage of it, because, I mean, I lived in Minnesota for 20 years, and every time I come home, I see it, it's gone wrong. It has a, it's on it, and it just, I think people want it, and I think people want to, like, kind of save some of the heritage of our town. Like, they see all these old businesses and old buildings that are just being either converted into something else or condos, and it's just, I don't know, I, I feel like we need something that's gonna bring back culture to our town.
But if you're looking for something that's, that can be done, I mean, to tear that down, it's, you're talking about a lot, a lot of money.
That's why, if, if there was a, some way that we could see the light, then that's where, that's why we want to really go forward. And we have access to a lot of people and a lot of funds, and so, I don't know.
I just want to say something. We did, uh, we know that the school's in poor condition. We met with the building inspector, and he said, the water and the pumps, everything, so, and we met with another woman who was looking into doing something for, like, four or five years ago.
Yeah.
And she, they did a lot of research, so we got all that information too, and we know the cost that it's gonna take to knock it down, so that's when we started looking into what are our options, and more about even how can you incorporate the community instantly? It's a beautiful piece of, I mean, it's not taking care of it, but the grass is beautiful, the trees are historic. You could have, like, concerts, and you could have, like, community things, like, without having a building for a while. You know, you could have portable containers, we were saying, that, like, that's what they're doing now, like, you know, young kids that are in small spaces, and, you know, you can have certain, a container that's a bathroom, and one that's a kitchen, and classrooms, and a fort, so it's like, you could move them once we built the structure. So, but not knowing that the school, you know, because it was in the trust that way, and we are giving the town an opportunity to fulfill that, because it is a learning center, that's what it's gonna be about.
Right.
And so, um, we're not gonna be, well, we don't want to invest thousands of dollars to know.
It'll be a lot more than thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands, yeah.
Even in the initial stages, it could, you know, it's gonna cost us $10,000 or $20,000 just to do some engineering.
Right.
All those things, and when you're a nonprofit, that's a lot of money to not know if we can even do it.
Exactly, right, yeah.
So that's why we're here. We wanted to know if it's even a possibility, because we did meet with Lincoln, and we were under, under the impression that it was not, no longer gonna be in the trust, and, you know, so that's why we're like, you know, we're giving it what it's supposed to be, is an educational center.
Really? Well, I mean, Lincoln, I mean, are we looking at long-term on, on this building as far as finding out if, if it's gonna be available at all? And if it is available, you know, could it be used for something more of a town need than what these folks are doing?
Well, we don't, we don't know how long the CIPRA process might take. That's entirely up to the Attorney General, and I'm gonna try and expedite it as quickly as possible with Town Council's assistance. Certainly, I think, from looking at all the possible remedies, legal remedies, that I think is likely to be the fastest one to give the town the most number of options in terms of that building. You know, we don't know that for sure, but I strongly suspect that the, that building is a tear-down.
Yeah.
Strongly. Uh, but, um, but we don't know that for sure right now.
So I guess, your turn.
Comment. I, I think what, what we did initially when we met with Lincoln, uh, we wanted to find out what the timeframe was. And the question that we were really asking for, can we use it? Or are they gonna change it so that it can be used to be sold for, let's say, retail or for, for housing or for some other business or that kind of thing? And if that was the case, um, we'd like to know what kind of, um, timeframe. And you indicated to us it could be over a year.
Yeah.
So what we were, next, uh, followed up with is suggestion of looking around for the places, which you did. We, we even looked at that BFI, which is a hazardous waste down, uh, Bedford Street. So we've hooked a lot of places, but what we want to do is really try to start with something that establishes one, uh, a reputation of, uh, community, a reputation of openness, a reputation of opportunity, and, um, not just art, music, and other, other kinds of movement, whatever it might be. So we're still, we still have our dream, and our dream is maybe someday that would be, we know that price is gonna be steep.
So if we get first refusal, like, if we have some kind of, because we know it's gonna be, could be a year, could be longer, and so we have to bid on it with everyone else?
Yeah.
Or, like, because if we are gonna be giving back to the town, it'll be like still a community, a, a community project. So that's why we're kind of here, to see, like, can we be that person? Like, want you guys to determine what you want to do with it? As far as, like, selling it, I'm assuming you want to sell it? That's why you're overturning the trust, or?
So, I mean, I can, I, I know that personally, I, I want to see that remain in the town's control, that property.
Yeah.
So if we were to set up a hypothetical situation, someone like you, it would be more of a lease situation. I, I don't really, it's such a good property, centralized in the town, and beautiful, as you guys said. I, I really don't want to see us give up control of that right now, where there could be so many.
I 100% agree. And that's originally what we were saying, that we wanted to lease it, like, it's, you know, it is a community building, and, you know, everything that we would do would be based upon the community.
So, so I guess the end result is that it's gonna, I mean, if it's gonna take a year for us to know exactly what, what we can do with it, I guess it's up to you whether or not you want to wait that or look for other alternatives.
Well, we'd like to wait if we can see that, like I said, to see that first refusal, or, you know, what are you gonna do with the property?
Right.
Because that's what right now is, we're gonna use, it's supposed to be an educational, through the non-trust or trust or whatever it's called. And so we're giving that proposal, like, we're gonna be an educational center for that piece of property, but you're in transition now with it, so you're not quite sure what it's gonna be.
Right. So I guess we won't know until it's released to us and we have our options.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If, for example, and it certainly wouldn't pay my attention, but if, for example, the property was ever to be sold, that would have to be approved by town meeting, full stop.
Yes.
If there was to be a lease to any non-public entity, including Artisan House, for example, and that lease was more than three years, that would have to be approved by town meeting. So, um, at the end of the day, what happens there in terms of a lease or a sale or anything, it's up to town meeting.
Mr. Chairman. One thing that came to mind with all this discussion about it is much like what we do with self-help on the corner of Maple. How, you know, I don't want to disclose exactly what, but it's a very small amount of money that we let them use this facility, and it's town-owned.
But in return, yeah, it's been up kept, much better than the Park Ave School.
Right, right. And so that in line, I would think that we, if we did it for that, we could do something like that in that scenario there as well. I think we're all pretty much in agreement. I think that we'd like to save that property as a town tradition, real estate, I guess, for, for options. But it's, again, it's up to town meeting.
And I guess that's not gonna, we're not gonna know that until.
Right.
We hear on what we settled on the property. That simple.
Right.
Chairman?
Yes.
I think it's important to know that we would not expect the town to spend any money on our project, that we would provide all the facilities.
Okay. Yes, Randy?
I, I love the idea. I love the concept, just briefly hearing about it in the last five minutes. I'm slightly confused, because when I saw this on, uh, the agenda, I thought we were actually going to hear.
Some good news.
On a disposition of where we were, and unfortunately, Mr. Evans, we're not any closer than we were seven months ago.
Seven years ago.
So, I mean, I hope you, you didn't get false hope that we, we were ready to move on this immediately, because I, clearly, we're, we're not.
No, we can't. We can't.
And I don't want the townspeople out thinking that we're trying to sell this property or anything like that.
Oh, right.
We, we still are, same spot we're in seven months ago on this. We were told we were, it was getting filed by Peter, and.
So I guess the next step.
I just want to question on, like, the filing, so you file that, um, and that's because it's about the trust, right? Is that why, you know, check is now, I just want to understand, you still want to keep it as town's property? That's what everyone seems like, that they want to agree that it still wants to remain in the town's control?
The, the, the town can always keep ownership of it, but, I mean, for a fantastic idea like that, I mean, at some point, when we know what we can do with the property, I'm sure we, we're going to try and seek.
Right, right.
Like, uh, an idea, pipe dream of mine, was something very similar, but more with like a boys' and girls' club coming in and offering very similar things. Does what you're doing fit the mold of education? Possibly. But again, we don't know. It's.
I think getting the idea out there for the people who, who are really decision-makers has been helpful to us, because it has, um, tempered where we're going and gives us an idea of the timeline a little bit better than what we had before. Because before, we didn't know we had a shot of anything, and we, we still may not have that, but we, we, we have a vision, and one of the things we think about is how many other groups, for, for example, the recreation department, could, uh, work with us to reprovide programs that they can't provide, or a senior citizen, if they want, if they need, uh, not needing the protein, or something else, or, or, uh, technology, or anything that they can't do, we would try to pick up and do that. Same thing with rec, if rec had something that they would want to do. Um, we want to be inclusive by rec, and that goes from little guys to people like me.
I mean, there's certainly tons of people in our town with skills, like Mrs. Molinari with the sign language, with things like that, where if we had a venue or a space, and Sean ran something similar years back that, you know, promoted those things. Unfortunately, we're still in the same spot.
Right, until we know what exactly, um.
Right.
Our rules are as far as that building is concerned. I would suggest that, you know, keep your hopes alive, but I would open my eyes and look, because your dream shouldn't be stand, you know, saying, okay, let's put the dream, uh, aside. aside, sidebar until we know. Keep looking. You may find a, an area in Whitman that you like better, or a piece of land that you could build something, you know? And just keep the dream alive.
Thanks.
Okay?
And if town meeting were to, you'd be a much more attractive applicant for town meeting to approve a long-term lease if you were an established entity.
Right.
If you got your foothold somewhere else in, in the interim while we wait for this to transition itself. I wish you the best.
Okay. All right. The Whitman Medical School project.
Yes, so, very briefly, the designer selection process continues for a designer for a renovated or new.
Middle school.
Take care, folks. Last week, the designer selection panel, of which includes 13 people, mostly from the state and also from the building trades, et cetera, and myself, Assistant School Superintendent George Farrow, and School Committee Member Beth Stafford, are, met last week, the 16 of us. The, there were, as a reminder, there were four applicants to be the designer for a request for services for the, the Whitman Middle School Building Committee's request for services out on the street. The, that panel of 16 of us, the designer selection panel, last week eliminated one of those. And now, next week, 8:30 in the morning on Tuesday, there will be the designer selection panel. Again, that group of 16 will be interviewing the three finalists and making a decision on a selected designer. Then there will be a negotiation on price for that, and then that contract will come forward to this full middle school building committee today. That full middle school building committee met, and the next meeting will be May 10th to hopefully finalize a contract with the picked, with the selected designer to move forward with the project. So just to keep them all informed about where that's, where that project's going.
Okay. 66 Pond Street.
Yes, so the new owners within the last few months of 66 Pond Street, this is at the end of Pond Street, right sandwiched between Hope Arts Pond and the MBTA train tracks. There is a new owner of that, that entity, the two principals of that entity requested a meeting with myself and Bob Kern, the Building Commissioner, to talk very preliminarily about what they would like to do with that property. They are, they are, right now, their designs on it are to have a 40B application there. As a quick reminder, the state's 40B Affordable, what's called the Affordable Housing Act, requires that in municipalities with less than what, 10% of what's considered to be affordable housing by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, we are at about 3.8%. In communities with less than 10%, local zoning bylaws and other rules may be bypassed in order to build what the state considers to be affordable housing. So that area is zoned industrial. Certainly, that right off the bat would be an exception to the town's zoning bylaws if they were seeking to build housing there. So they are now currently presenting that they would like to build a 40B entirely rental units and proposing 231 rental units. To be clear, this is very, very preliminary, and the reason I wanted to bring it up in this report is because they requested to meet with the board to present as detailed plans as they have right now for what their goals are for that property. So, so that's, you know, that's pretty much most of the information we have right now. Again, it's the two principles of this new owner. And what I'd suggest, you have later in your, in your meeting to discuss when your meeting agenda is, we talked about a couple, if the board wants to meet with them, we talked about a couple dates in May for when they might be available to come make a presentation on what they would like to do with the property. So, that's, that's what's going on with 66 Pond Street. Obviously, I'm happy to answer any questions about information that I know right now, but obviously, detailed questions should, you know, I think the board might want to consider meeting with them.
Did they mention to you how many bedrooms they were thinking per unit?
They did. Prelimarily, they were talking about 38 of those 231 units that they're thinking about, 38%. They're saying would be, might be one bedroom, 57% two-bedroom, and 5% three-bedroom.
That may have to be consistent.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I think, before you started, we sent the planning board a housing production plan that would have targeted about a half a percent of affordable housing growth per year. Have we heard anything back from the planning board on that housing production plan?
No, and in fact, if the board recalls, we had some conversations regarding the new MBTA Communities Act.
That was my next question.
In addition, yes. And so if the board chose last year to refer to the planning board, had a couple conversations with the planning board chair, trying to get it back in front of them, and I will continue that process of seeking that.
Would a project like this qualify for a 40R if it's with, it's certainly within the area of the train station?
Possibly. It's, I think it's really impossible to know right now since they're so early in their, in their, in the property owners' process as to what they're seeking to do.
One question. Why would we meet with them? Shouldn't they be meeting with the planning board?
So, so it, ultimately, if they do choose to go a 40B route, they would need to go to the zoning board of appeals. It's common, and that's, I think, why they made the request. It's common in this kind of situation for a developer to seek to meet with the board sale. But you certainly don't have to.
Right.
No reason to. I, I mean, there's no reason that you have to, but I want to make sure that you knew that, per their request, Bob and I met with them, we heard what they had to say, and again, you had the opportunity to hear them too, or, you know, not. They, they can go and formulate their plans and choose to make a filing with the, with zoning board of appeals directly if they want.
One thing I might add is, for them meeting with us, as opposed, or the board, I should say, is because the, the word and information would get out better in this venue than it would be with the zoning board of appeals, which has no television. So to get the information out to the general public about what they're proposing, meeting with this board might be in the best interest of the community. It's just my take on it.
I would just like to see the process a little bit further down the road before what we met with them. I, I think this has the potential to definitely stir some people up.
Oh, yeah, I would say so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't my intention, but I just, I mean, I think the community needs.
And I would much rather them be a little bit further into the process, like, like it is zoned commercial. They're going to have to get a, the whole district rezoned.
A variance through the ZPA, right?
So through the 40B process, they would not need to resign because of the state 40B law, which is very frustrating.
That they could take, the state can take one of our only commercial parcels and make it residential?
Yep. The thing is too, though, but it depends on how many units you can put there, because I know that when they wanted to build some 40Bs behind the middle school, that project, they wanted a number of them, but there was not enough room for what they wanted, so they backed off and decided not to. So if they can't put as many as they're looking for, the developer, they may just back away and say, well, I mean, 231, you know, units, that's, well, apartment buildings, so, you know, what have you got, three-story buildings and stuff, that, that may not work in that area. And they may say, well, then, no, if we can't do it, if the land won't accommodate it, then we're not going to do it. So, I mean, it, it's happened before where 40Bs, companies have turned around and said, no, it won't work for what we're looking to do. You know, and, you know, you don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, I mean, did they actually buy the property or are they prospective buyers?
Do they own the property?
They already own it?
Current owners.
They, they, they do. They closed on it about two months ago.
All right. And have you and Bob seen any plans? Did they give you any?
None. They, they, they talked about the rental aspect of it, they talked about the number of units. They, by, they showed us one rough slide regarding the site placement and what they were likely seeking to do, but certainly no elevation and none of that, no.
Should be interesting. What's next? We're going into, what, new business now? I need a motion to vote, to ratify the contract of Deputy Chief Joe Bombardier that was just approved in executive session.
So move.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. There you go, Joe. Thank you. Act on the request of the Board of Health for permission to conduct a drive-through rabies clinic for dogs and cats on Feb, on Friday, June 24th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, in the parking lot of, located next to the police station.
So move.
Question, why did they change it there? Because they didn't do a drive-through and not? Huh? Right, because in the past, it's been down by the kennel, but if they're going to do a drive-through where they just go into the car.
They felt where it was a business day, and they'd be having trucks and stuff moving in and out of there, which is a little bit of a hassle.
Okay.
So they're going to use the lot next to the.
Works for me. Okay.
Kennel made the dogs nervous then.
Yeah, we'll be there. All right, do I hear a motion?
We did.
Oh, wait, on favor?
Aye.
All right. There you go. I'm sorry. Discuss inclu, including, discuss including the Whitman Middle School Building Project in the strategic plan.
Yes, so if the board recalls, after a long process, the board adopted a strategic plan after that, and, and the middle school project was included in there, but not extremely prominently.
Okay.
It was mentioned in there. School Committee Member Fred Small asked that it be placed more prominently. What you have in front of you is a draft that I put together as a suggestion, if the board does want to make it more prominent, of, the only changes are on page five, under schools, in the bottom right-hand corner, adding renovated or new middle school under five-year outcomes.
Okay. It's mentioned.
And then, like, and then later in, on page 10, when it goes into some details under five-year outcomes, adding renovated or new middle school.
Okay.
We'll make that motion.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, Fred. Act on the request of Don Baez on behalf of the Whitman Cultural Council to use the town auditorium and the lower town hall as an alternate location in the event that there's inclement weather on Whitman Day event scheduled to take place on June 25th, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
So move. Second.
Second. Now, if I understand that it was supposed to be outside, and if it rains, I just want to bring it into us.
That's correct. Just if it rains.
I have no problem with that.
I don't either.
Any, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Act on the request of Town Clerk Don Valley to appoint checkers for the May 2nd Annual, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, as outlined in the memo dated April 12th, 2022, and they will be Sheila McVeigh, 130 Pine Street, Betty Jean Conrad, 79 Indian Trail, Leanne Valencourt, 877 Auburn, Auburnville Way Unit G2, and Carol O'Brien, 48 Alden Street, apartment one. Do I hear a motion?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
She's all set. Act on the request of Kevin Lyman on behalf of the Whitman Hansen Band Booster.
Chair, you skipped one.
What did I miss?
Act on the request of Tina Ulette.
Huh?
You skipped one.
Food pantry. Act on the request of Tina Ulette on behalf of the Whitman Food Pantry.
All right, I act on the request, I'm sorry, Tina Ulette, on behalf of the Whitman Food Pantry, for a reverse 911 in connection with the May 14th, 2022 Annual USPS-NALG Food Drive and benefit the Whitman Food Pantry.
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. Would that be just set up by Josh to do this, or do you?
Yeah, he'd, he'd, he'd work with them. As far as whether or not they record it or he records it, we'll work that out, but, but certainly Josh would be integral in it.
Right. Thanks.
How do people go about requesting the use of the reverse 911 system? Is this just a?
Make a request to the office, and then I come to you and ask if you want to do it. I, I do think on a general basis, you, you'd want to be careful about, about doing that because we don't want people to discount it when it's needed for emergency situations and storms. But, you know, this is probably, I think we sort of looked at this as an eminent lead, you know, that makes sense for the food pantry.
Act on the request of Kevin Lyman on behalf of the Whitman Hansen Band Booster for permission to use the town hall. What?
I don't think it's, we took a vote on that.
On that.
Oh, our motion.
We got the motion and second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, I'm just going to, look at the time. Someone's going to yell at me that's sitting in the corner there. Act on, right, we're going to finally get to Kevin's. Act on the request of Kevin Lyman on behalf of the Whitman Hansen Band Booster for permission to use the town hall auditorium on Monday, May 23rd, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in order to conduct an annual banquet.
So move.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion on this?
Is this, does this fall in line with what we would normally
Yes.
let happen?
Right. I've talked to, I've talked to members with dollars of scholars, and they've used the town hall, no, no charge. Right, and I think within the motion, maybe it should be that all fees are eliminated, if there's any.
Waived.
Waived.
Now, do you know if they, they plan to bring in caterers? Are they going to do it themselves, or they're going to use that kitchen?
No, they're planning on bringing their own food.
Bring their own.
Yep. Aye.
Would they have to have some kind of approval by the Board of Health?
Don't believe so.
Okay.
For this type of, no. But I, but I'll double check and make sure.
Okay. Very good.
Anything else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Draft on security camera policy.
This is just in front of you for the first time, just, I certainly wouldn't expect any kind of adoption tonight, but in the conversation, as you know, on the town meeting warrant, there's an article for cameras in the town park. We existing have cameras at the police station, at the fire station, and at town hall. There might possibly be one coming for, not possibly, there will be one coming for the library parking lot. And so Josh and I were talking about it, came up in the Capitol Committee as well, that it probably would make sense to have a policy on the use of that, who has, who has authority of it, who has control over it, et cetera. Josh, I appreciate it, take, took the lead on drafting this. I had a couple tweaks that I suggested, and just wanted to bring it before you. Again, certainly wouldn't expect approval tonight, but just to start the conversation on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Obviously, happy to take any questions about it.
Huh?
I said, obviously, happy to take any questions on it if you have them now.
Any questions?
No.
No? You're going to bring before, you're going to bring a full policy before us and then we can look at it?
Yeah, I think it probably won't change much from this, from my perspective, but yeah.
It was time to look at it. Okay. Does our lawyers have to look at the policy, or?
I, I think I'll probably have them take a quick look at pieces of it. I think it's pretty good shape, but just in particular to make sure that the records retention pieces are correct. But I think, but I, I think it's fine, but we'll make sure.
Right. Now, shop needle, shop needles and drug turn in day.
I just, just wanted to make sure, there's certainly flyers up, and I think the police department's been, and health department have been doing a great job getting that word out on this, but at the Whitman Police Department parking lot on Saturday, May 7th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., via collection of any sharps and needles and expired, you know, unused prescription medicine. unused prescription medications that people have.
Okay, and that's for Whitman residents only?
That is correct, only Whitman residents. Folks will be asked to confirm residency.
Okay. And next, set May's meeting schedule. Looking at May, I got, let's see, we have a meeting, we have a meeting, the second, right before town meeting. You think town meeting will go two days?
Quite possible.
I mean, and if it does, huh? It is, it's a lot of articles. Will we need to meet on the 3rd?
No, the 10th.
Huh?
Already set the 10th.
Okay, we set the 10th. Why do I have Board Selectmen at, why do I have at the high school? I don't know. So we're meeting on the 10th, and that's it? Are we gonna meet on the 24th, maybe? Do you need to set in?
Could be on the 24th. I think the main thing, so that, so that I can plan, and, you know, help to plan what you're gonna be having on those, on those meetings, is having a decision, you know, conclusively from the board as to whether or not, you know, you want to think about meeting with the 40, with the 66 Pond owners now or later, and if, in addition, there was a possible dog hearing coming, the complainant in that dog hearing later contacted me and said he might want to stop that dog complaint. He had said he'd, he'd let me know by a particular date, he didn't, I've been reaching out to him to try and find out, does he or does he not want to proceed with this dog complaint? But if he does want to proceed with it, I'd like to do that on May 10th. And then, and then another piece to, one thing we've been trying to schedule, and it seems as though we have a tentative date if it works for the board, is to have environmental partners come in and give a brief presentation on stormwater management, per the request of Selectmen Evans, and I think the rest of the board said they wanted to hear that too. So I'd suggest if the dog hearing's to happen, that happens on May 10th, and the stormwater management happens on May 10th, and then you can decide, you know, whether or not you want to meet with the 66 Pond Street owners later in May or not at all.
I think May 24th might be a good night to, well, definitely reorganize.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Holds a position.
Right. May 10th will be my final meeting.
So, well.
The 24th is right after the due date, so I may not be here.
So, all right, so five, well, you can't reorganize, 5:10, he's still being on the Selectmen.
The 24th happened.
Oh, right, 24th, right. 24th, yeah.
How about the 10th and the 24th?
Sounds good to me. Seven o'clock.
Expeditious.
Seven o'clock. I'm gonna wait, I had something else.
So, can I just get a sense from the board about?
I don't think we need to see.
Okay. I just want to hear.
Yeah. I, I would, I would might suggest later on, down the road.
Yeah, when they actually have a plan.
Yeah.
All business, school audit.
Yes, so April 15th was the deadline for the most recent re-released invitation for bids from the towns of Whitman and Hansen for the, for the regional school district comparative audit. We did not receive any bids by that date, however, we did receive interest from the Collins Center, which the board knows it's worked well. It had done the classification and compensation study. The Collins Center does not, has a policy of not responding to, responding to invitations for bids because it's exempt from the state procurement law because it's a state agency. Selectmen Lamatina and I met with Laura Fitzgerald Kemmet, who is the school's liaison from the Hansen Board of Selectmen, and Lisa Green, the town administrator from Hansen, to, and met with two folks from the Collins Center yesterday to get a clear understanding as to what they could propose and what they would seek to propose. I think that was a really positive meeting in my mind. I think there'd be really good candidates to do this work and have the skill set to do this work. They have someone on staff there who has worked extensively in regional school districts and I think has the knowledge set that would be helpful. They have promised a proposal, including a cost proposal within the coming week, and so I think, and from my perspective, would hope that we'd be able to come to the board on May 10th with, here's a proposal exact, about exactly what the Collins Center would seek to do, here's what it will cost, and seek the approval from the board to move forward with them.
Just on that, have we had a town, I know it's not on the agenda, have we had a town audit?
It's almost done.
Almost done? Okay.
Because we typically had that before a town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Didn't we typically see that?
Years have been late town meetings, I actually don't know.
The auditor got, we were pushing them, and we had to push them quite a bit, they got a late start, but they are almost done.
So they have everything they have, like I know last year.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Building Commissioner's position.
Yes, so the board recalls, that's, that invitation for applications for the building position has been out there, received seven applications so far, which I think are serious The, the plan is to have a team of five, including Selectmen Evans and the current Building Commissioner, Bob Curran, to interview those folks, hoping to do that this week, but Bob's actually on vacation, so hoping we can get all those done next week and go from there and have a recommendation or a couple of recommendations to the board, either, either one candidate that the interview panel would like to recommend, or perhaps two. So that's where that process is.
I have one question on that. I don't know, I don't know who you have for applicants, but are any of them builders that live in Whitman? Because we, like, I've, I've used some builders, you know, some repairs to the house from builders that work out of Whitman, you know, get it to the, from Bob Curran, he's got a list of, of people that, you know, good idea to call for, you know, whether you need electrician or a plumber or a builder, and I have used them, so I don't know if any of those are on the list, if in fact, if they are and I have used them for repairs to my house, do I need to abstain in picking that person? A person.
Let's seek an opinion from the Ethics Commission on that. I would, I would suggest.
Yeah. Well, we'll see what happens when you come, I just don't, you know. Okay, and HR grants and procurement position?
Yes, so this has also been out there, that has been more frustrating, we've only received a few serious applications. My intent, originally, we discussed not having it full-on out there in, in like, indeed, in some of the other larger sites. I intend to get it out there unless the board objects, seeing as how we haven't really received many serious applications and seeing what we can get. But I'm welcome to thoughts from the board on that process.
Is there anything else? Anything from the board?
Just more resumes to sort through last night, so.
Okay. That being said, we're all done with business, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Quick.
Real quick. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done.